Is anyone from staff coming for this, I wonder? Does any one of the sheriff's come down? I don't know. Not that we could get it.
Call this meeting at Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snipper.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Snipper will not be here this evening. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you and the council know that our peace delegate, Pat Lovelace, is out of the hospital again and home in recovery. For those of you that don't know Pat, he's the blind gentleman that's here for most council meetings. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
I have a few comments. First one is about timeliness of the council meetings. I get up at home again, you know, close to midnight after the last council meeting and I have to get up and go to work in the morning. And I've noticed that since the last election, that our council meetings are running later and later. And I'd really like to enlist the assistance of the mayor and other people in the council to get that under control. I don't think it's fair to our constituents and the people who want to participate in public meetings to allow the meetings to run until 11 o'clock. And so, I'm going to leave tonight between 10:00 and 10:30 whether the meeting is over or not. So that's comment number one. Well, hopefully, we'll get it together and not have that problem. Comment number two. I had another one of those conversations with a constituent this week about stormwater and neighbor-to-neighbor relations. And, you know, we've talked a couple times on the council about this. I've had some really good conversations with Darryl Braithwaite about ways in which the city might support better neighborly relations around stormwater. Sadly, this story ended with a court case and appeals and $38,000 in work and two people who used to be good friends not speaking to each other anymore. And I know that they made contact with the city at one point to ask the city to render a decision and I think, and I've heard this story, not this particular story, but I've heard this kind of a story, a couple cases in my ward, some cases in Ward 1, on more than one occasion. And maybe it might be worth looking into when we get a complaint from someone or a question from someone about the stormwater to provide some more resources. I know there's a dispute resolution service that's operated by Montgomery County, but it's just, it's a sad story to hear. And so, I would like it if we could have a conversation maybe about how we could engage that better since I hear it over and over again. And the last one is about people parking in front of the fire department that's being rebuilt. As soon as the fire department started the rebuild, I guess not the fire department, but the county started the rebuild, I got a lot of comments from constituents who were concerned about keeping the sidewalk clear in front of the firehouse. And we talked about it here in the council meeting and one of the comments that we got back was that they absolutely had to move that block wall barricade out to the edge of the sidewalk. At that time, the justification was because there was a giant pit three feet behind it. That seemed reasonable, 20-foot drop-off. They wanted a little bit more of a buffer than just right on the edge. But, you know, that pit's been filled in, it's mostly been built now, and what we have now is the area where the sidewalk is at is being used as a parking lot by the construction workers. And so, I've asked the city about this a couple times. I've gotten a couple responses back, one of which was, well, you know, we could refer it to the state. One of them is that they're almost done building it. But when I go by there in the morning, there's frequently more than six cars that are parked and they're parked straddling the sidewalk with their wheels partially into the state highway. And so, the thing is, is that I, it's the kind of thing that drives my constituents crazy because here's this perfectly good, or could be, could be a sidewalk, we could put a temporary sidewalk in with asphalt, but instead, we're using it as a parking lot. And it's not just the sidewalk that's being used as a parking lot, but people are moving out into the street. And I don't understand why we can't enforce the law there. I would argue that if people parked across the sidewalk and into the street on any other part along Carroll Avenue, that we would give them a ticket and eventually tow them away. And I don't understand why we tolerate it there at this intersection. Visibility around this intersection is already particularly difficult. Pedestrians already don't abide by the requirement to walk across the street and use the crosswalk across the street so we know people are walking around it. People are walking around it with strollers, which I don't support, but, you know, it's how people are using it. And then, this week, I guess it was last week, maybe it was on Friday, exactly what I thought was happened, would happen, happened. We've allowed people to park over the sidewalk in front of the area where the construction zone was, and when that was full, they then decided it was okay to park in front of the houses that aren't a part of the construction zone, straddling the sidewalk and into the road. And when I went to work on Friday morning, there was a car parked in front of the greenhouse, which I don't know what the address is, but it's the house that the people removed from the one house and the other. They're parked across that sidewalk out into the roadway and people to pull around them are actually having to pull partially into the oncoming lane of traffic there, which isn't that wide. So, I would like some official response from the city about what we're going to do. And I personally, and I, my constituents don't really feel that we're going to wait until they finish building. The parking lot is acceptable. It's just not acceptable to let people park on the state highway and over the sidewalk. And in the meantime, it would be great if we could get the sidewalk usable because it's a heck of a lot safer to let people stay along that roadway and go alongside the co-op than make all the kind of funky crosses at the junction. I think it'd be worthwhile pouring a temporary asphalt sidewalk there. Thank you.
And if I can just comment on your earlier observation on the council meetings. Great minds think alike. I was...
You going home at 10:30, too?
I was thinking along the same lines. I have been known to do that in the past, but I'm hopeful that we will be finished before that this evening. And I would agree, it's incumbent on all of us to make sure that we make the comments that we need to make on items, but that we don't stray too far afield, that we try and be concise. And I think if we do that, and keep in mind that we have had a couple meetings recently that just went on way too long, that we can rein everything back in and try and get much closer to our aimed-for 10:00 adjournment. So, if we all keep that in mind, I think we'll be able to do that pretty easily and I think we'll all be happier. I know that a number of us have had rough Tuesdays after late Mondays, and that's one of the reasons we try and schedule it to end at a reasonable hour. And I think we all, our brains work better if we don't go too late and we make better decisions. So, the time is not well-spent when we go too late. So, we will all endeavor, and I will particularly endeavor, to make sure that we end at a reasonable hour. And if sometime I kind of start wrapping the gavel a little bit, or making noises, or making signs at my colleagues, that may be why. So, just take it in a cooperative and kindly spirit and see what we can do. Any other, oh, and I'll just mention that we started the meeting at 8:00 this evening because the number of members of the council took the opportunity to go to District 20 Night, which our delegation in Annapolis put on. So, it was a good chance for us to go down to Annapolis, talk with our representatives and also with other delegates and senators from other districts and also other people, other residents who live in District 20. And there's about 110,000 residents of District 20. So, luckily, they weren't all there because there wasn't that much food that was put out, but it was a good opportunity to talk with folks and they're very helpful. Other council comments? Councilmember Robinson.
Well, I'm going to blame the late council meetings on roads. And I was at the, I was in Annapolis today, a little bit early, and I went to a committee meeting on transportation and they were going on and on and on about roads and public transportation. There's a lot to say about public transportation. Meanwhile, on New Hampshire Avenue, there's a development kind of starting to be discussed and the developer will be at the Pinecrest Neighborhood Association tomorrow night at 7:30 at the 6411 Orchard Avenue. That's the location if people from my ward would like to go to that and listen to the developer discuss plans for Eastern and New Hampshire. Speaking of roads, I'm going to come back to the sidewalk issue on the north side of Ethan Allen Avenue. Colleen, you and I, you and I had a kind of a conversation about this last week and I've continued speaking with my constituents on the backside of Manor Circle. And they tell me that what's most in their mind, in fact, even in addition to the accessibility to the junction, is the way it looks pretty junky along that last stretch. As you're getting to the junction, on the right-hand side, coming from New Hampshire, these backyards come almost to the street and there's a lot of trash in there. Of course, it's, we don't know quite whose responsibility is to maintain the road and I'm not sure whose responsibility it is to clean up that trash. But that's what's really on their mind, in addition to the sidewalks. And I suggested that the folks who are organizing there talk both to our staff, namely, Department of Housing and Community Development, and also to the Business Association because they do a lot to spruce up the junction and do trash pickups there. But that's what's largely on their minds, is how that section looks just as you come into the junction area. And finally, speaking of roads, I'm still stewing and fuming really over the Sligo Park Hills issue that's in process right now. I think that the, that the county's doing us a great disservice in the way they do their reports, not counting cars that go through that that are Tacoma Park cars, and also miscounting and undercounting cars that will end up on Piney Branch in Philadelphia. And based on several conversations I've had in the past week, I really think that it's a very unfortunate community-to-community model that's being followed on the part of the county. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Wright.
I have a question as much as a comment, which is, is the council going to submit something to the county on the issue that Councilmember Robinson mentioned? So, I think public comment closes on the 10th. Isn't that right?
Uh huh.
And have we figured out whether we can, should comment within the public comment period or after as a, as a city or as a council? Because if not, I, I need to personally, as a council member, submit my concerns, but I don't want to do that if we're going to collectively submit something.
I know that we thought about that and as far as I know, we haven't done anything about that. I would say, given that today is the 8th and the deadline is the 10th, we probably ought to submit individually if we're going to.
Okay.
I spoke to Suzanne Ludlow about this issue and she, her feeling, her belief is that if the council submits a resolution after the public comment period, it will be fully considered as a courtesy to the council. She, we had talked that at this point, staff wasn't exactly sure what the resolution would contain if the staff drafted a resolution for the council. So, it seemed like a little more time was needed.
So, it sounds like if we want to, if we want to submit individually and also copy those to the deputy city manager and send along any further comments, we can come up with something soon after that will be considered.
Mayor Williams.
Uh huh.
I do think it would probably be more powerful with the county if the city and the council were speaking as one voice.
Yeah, and so, we will do that.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that you all are coordinating your individual comments so we're being very clear about what the city's position is.
Are you then saying that we're going to wait or that we're going to do both? Do individual comments and then gather them together?
I think if there's a consensus on the part of the council, you know, just some key points that you would like addressed in any kind of submission to the county, staff would be happy to work something up. I think based on the comments last week, I think we're a little unclear as to what the consensus of the council is in terms of what should be submitted.
Do you think they'll accept individual council members if we, that have stronger position even if we as a, as a body submit something that's, that's a consensus amongst us? Or is that...
No, I'm sure the county would accept that. I just, I don't know how much similarity there is in the different council members' points of view. So, I can see if the council has one statement and then there's individual comments being submitted by council members that perhaps are contradictory, that could be somewhat confusing to the county. So, I think it just depends, Councilmember Robinson, in terms of how much consensus there is on the part of the council.
If we can submit comments, circulate them, then it sounds like we don't have a deadline of Wednesday, but let's consider that we have a deadline of this week.
Amongst ourselves.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Schultz, can you have comments?
Yeah. I wanted to concur with Colleen's point of view. I've already spoken or addressed the issue of the lateness of the council meetings to Mayor Williams. I think we're all probably feeling that we need to do something about it. Obviously, part of that is self-discipline among us city council members. But I would also like to point out that we need to pay more attention to the three-minute rule at the, at the, at the public, from comments from the public. So, I think it's incumbent on citizens as well to kind of help us get these meetings over with as quickly as we can. But I'm not going to leave between 10:00 and 10:30. I'll probably leave around 11:00.
You're retired.
That's true. I am retired. She just reminded me of that. Except that by about 10:45, I start losing my sense of humor. And by the time 11:30 rolls around, I am approaching anger at what anybody would say. So, and then my wife gets it when I come home, so what's, I mean, this is just cruel. I wanted to say that the Department, the Federal Department of Transportation has granted us a $12.3 million stimulus grant to the planned, called the Transit Center, but we might more familiar or think of it as the bus transfer station to be built at Langley, in Langley Park, Tacoma Langley, at the intersection of University and New Hampshire Avenue. $12.3 million. This was a grant that's really part of the stimulus. It's called a TIGER grant, T-I-G-E-R. And you don't want to know what T-I-G-E-R stands for. It's one of those things where they figured out what they wanted to have the, have the acronym may be, and then they decided what should, where the words be to make the acronym. So, in any case, this means that basically, the Transit Center is paid for. And it had to compete with thousands of applications from across the United States for the, some of the stimulus money in this particular category. And it was one of a small number, relatively speaking, that was selected. The issue right now is just a matter of the city continuing progress with regard to acquiring the site from the owner. And when that's done, then the thing will actually be able to proceed to the construction process eventually. I don't know anything more about it than that, but I just thought this was excellent news, that that facility is going to be built. Thank you.
Next item is additional agenda items and scheduling update. Councilmember Siemens has requested that Consent Agenda Item B be pulled from the consent agenda. We will address that immediately after the consent agenda. And I just want to point out, on upcoming meetings, next Monday, March 15th, is Ward 2 Night. And we'll also have a presentation of a report from the Washington Edmondus Hospital Land Use Committee next Monday as well. The following Monday, the 22nd, we will have an opportunity to talk with Councilmember Elrich. And I know that in the past, we've availed ourselves of that opportunity and it has lasted about an hour. And I know that part of the reason that last week's meeting went on a bit was we spent a good deal of time talking with the kind of council president, Nancy Florine. So, that might be one place where if we have any thoughts about what we might want to talk to him about, we get our ducks in a row and stay organized and see if we can do it in less than an hour. We have work session items on the continued discussion of the city lot and other Tacoma Junction issues. And we also have a discussion, tentative discussion of proposed policies and procedures for the use of the auditorium. And then I'll just point out that the final Monday in the month, March 29th, which is the fifth Monday, we don't have an official city council meeting, but we have a community conversation in this building, in the lobby and in this room, in the Isaiah Room, about potential for requesting state law change to permit off-site sale of beer and wine in Tacoma Park. And that takes us through March and then that gets us to April, which is budget time. And we don't have any minutes to adapt this evening, so the next item on the agenda is public comment period. If anybody would like to make any comments on anything that is not on our regular meeting agenda, which means basically the consent agenda, which means you can comment on the consent agenda, or anything else on the meeting, or anything else that you'd like to talk about. And if you'd like to identify yourself and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Pat Rumbaw and I brought some playful friends that were part of the Tacoma Park Play Committee. We were formed a year ago and, and first off, I really want to thank you for your support. You've heard me once or twice over the past year and we've really had a lot of fun. We're here tonight because we have an ask. And our ask is to promote play in the city of Tacoma Park. We would like each one of you to go after someone in your ward that would join us, either become a member of the Play Committee, or help represent your ward. Because we want to represent everyone. We want to be diverse. We want to be able to speak the languages that are spoken where you live. And we also want to represent you so that our play day this year is going to move from Hefner Park to the middle school. And we hope to, instead of have 200 people, have 500 people. We're going to have a couple hundred kids playing soccer, so we might be able to reach that goal. So, we really hope you will, when you're out walking your dog, or whatever you're doing, out with your children or friends, and someone talks about a park or something that they would like to see done in Tacoma Park, say, "Would you join the Play Committee? Would you like to..." We meet, it's randomly. Sometimes it's once a month and before the play day, we met once a week. Couple of things. These are our play shirts. We're asking $10 for them. Don't they look lovely on these ladies? They're for male and female, so if you'd like one, we have them for children. But if I may ask Councilmember Wright, if, if you want to get, if someone wants to join the Play Committee, or wants a shirt, or wants to, anything, to contact him and he has my email or cellphone. The last thing is, I really have a goal to get a website. And I would love, love, love to find a middle school, high school student that would like to help make it. And I would do everything I can to get that person community service and maybe an award or something. But we really want to expand and make our playful city even more playful. Thank you so much.
Pat, since people do watch on television, it might be good for you to say your phone number and email if they want to get in touch with you if they're interested also.
Okay. I'll try to be clear and say that. My email is PAT, P-A-T, T-E-N-N, five eight, at AOL dot com. So, PAT1058. Two Ts, two Ns. And my cellphone, 301, nine two eight, nine nine six two. Come play with us.
And that T-E-N-N is because of Tennessee, right?
I, I wanted PAT tennis. You, you may or may not know I'm a tennis nut. And anyway, I couldn't get it from AOL, so I was born in '58. Long story. Any of our other playful people? Am I forgetting? Oh, oh, yes. In the front row, Mary Feldman, and behind her, Colleen DePaul, live at the tower, Victory Tower. And on Tuesday nights, from 7:00 to 9:00, you can come play intergenerational board games nights. I, I try to go. It's a lot of fun. Oh, and our next meeting is next Tuesday, March 16th, at 7:00 PM, at my house, at 7301 Maple. And we're going to try to keep it to an hour so we can go play games night after that. Thank you so much for all you do.
Sounds like a good idea. And if we get our meeting ended on time...
Can I say a little bit about the games program?
Sure. If we get our meeting ended on time, we'll go play games, too.
Can you hear me if I stand up?
Do we have a hand mic?
We'll get you the mic.
All right. The games program at Tacoma meets every Tuesday night. It started when we renovated the place and there was not much to do. And the idea was that there would be something to do. We, we meet every Tuesday night from 7:00 to 9:00. Last Tuesday, we had four games, four tables of games, and two tables of bridge people. The bridge people are a group who come in from outside. They heard about us and wanted to play some play. We have snacks. We have popcorn and pretzels and cookies. I guess I'm the coordinator. I remind the dining room and I remind the third desk and I make sure we have the snacks. I'm a strong believer in, if you keep your mind active, it helps keep your body active. I don't sound much like it, but I'm much more active than I think. And I would very much like to join with her group, whatever.
What night do they play bridge?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, all right.
If you're not too tired.
My mother plays bridge and she's coming to see me.
We could have loved it here. Well, we're going to excuse ourselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hope.
Any other public comments?
Okay.
Okay, then we will move on to the city manager's comments.
I guess the council is aware, we've had a number of burglaries in the past week or so. And Detective Cucci is here this evening and I thought it might be helpful if he could make some brief comments regarding the department's response and update the council.
Welcome back, Chief. I know you've been out of town for some extended leave and I hope everything is going well and we're happy to have you back.
Well, it's good to be back. Although I miss the blizzard, I have to tell you, it's the coldest it's been in Florida in 32 years. I use my heat more than I've ever used it down there. But my wife's coming along. She's got a long road to recovery, but I appreciate the fact that I was able to spend several weeks with her. And Monday nights did feel a lot different, I have to say. I'm aware of the, I'm coming, although I haven't been here, as Barb knows, I've read my emails, but I have stayed out of it because I had nursing duties and they did take priority. And I promised my wife I would concentrate on her, which I did. But I got back Saturday and I've been talking with staff. We've had 14 burglaries since the spree started. 11 where property was taken, three where no property was taken. I hope to be able to report to you by tomorrow night on some things that we've been doing in the case. And I'm very confident that we'll be able to give you some good news in the next couple of days. But the staff has been working very hard on it and we got, we got some breaks. I got back in town and some things have happened positive, so I'll take credit. But we, we do have some good things happening and I think we'll have some good news shortly and hopefully, we'll report back to you on that. We had a community meeting with Rubens District while I was gone and 10 people have requested security surveys. If they're listening tonight, I want to let them know they've been assigned that to the patrol division and we will be contacting those residents to take care of that in the near future. I am aware of the parking situation in the firehouse. I did follow the emails. I'm aware of Darryl's conversation. Lieutenant Barris is here tonight. We'll be checking on it in the morning as he comes in to see that we are parked properly because they have an advisor with the law. And we will keep an eye on it for you this week, okay?
Well, that's, that'll make the constituents happy.
So, but it's good to be back and hopefully, we can put this crime spree to a great conclusion.
Okay, Chief. Thank you.
Just want to say, thank the opportunity to thank Captain Corsi for his filling in for the chief over this period of time. And apparently, he rose to the occasion and that's important to all of us. Good to know we got a good guy like that who's there to back up our chief.
Okay. That's it? All right. Then we will move along to the presentation on the report and recommendations from Small Community Grant Program Committee. from Small Community Grant Program Committee. And I believe there are some members of that committee here. So if you all want to come up to the table.
And then Sherry, so that much.
Okay, and if you want to introduce yourselves, and take it from there.
I'm Jacqueline Schick, and I've been, I guess, the secretary.
I'm Franka Brilliant, a member of the committee.
Sherry is another member of the committee, Sherry Daniels, and she'll be right back. Not sure there are 10 grants here, we just made our report, so if you want us just to go through all 10 briefly?
Sure, just give us a little briefing on all of them, we hopefully all had a chance to read it, and I'll just say that we certainly appreciate your diligence in looking at all this, and the memo was very helpful in laying out your understanding and your recommendations, and if you want to just go through those real quick, we'll, then hopefully, if we'll have any, maybe if there's a question or two from the council tonight, and we're scheduled, if we can do it, to, I think, this is on for next week?
Okay.
Is it next week?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay. Two weeks from tonight, which we would vote on this. Sorry, PM, go ahead.
Okay, so we'll go through one at a time, and I guess we'll alternate them.
Yeah. I'm Sherry Daniels, and it was interesting that we, the members of the Play Committee were here, because I think we learned a little bit more about them from listening to them tonight, and seeing their energy level than what came through in their proposal, unfortunately, but that was interesting, since they had a grant application in. We'll go in order, and the first one is Art for the People, and their request was for $2,000 in grant money. We thought the application was very well laid out, it was very clear, they want to incorporate a mural art project in Rain Garden, on the public portion of the Westmoreland Business District, which is that large concrete wall we've all been staring at for years. The project director who wrote it seems to be very well organized, there's been success and success from that group in similar projects. It involves the business community, it addresses the need for long-term maintenance, it's probably an area that's going to need a little more attention to develop a program that's sustainable, and the maintenance of it. We felt that the program met the grant program guidance efforts, and improving the established business area and Old Town section, and creating, inviting an interesting gateway to the business area, and also looking from an environmental point of view in controlling the hard surface runoff. And they are reaching out to bring in a lot of volunteer effort to make that happen. So the committee gave it our full approval, we thought it was a really well-done application, and very worthwhile.
Moving on to Project 2, the Crossroads Farmer Market, in partnership with Rolling Terrace PTA, to create the Crossroads Health Eating Initiative. They requested $2,500. I'd like to say that it was a pleasure to read this proposal. If you may recall, we had some criticism of the Crossroads in the first go-around, in their application packet, that we weren't clear what they wanted to do, and we think they took all our suggestions to heart. Really well-put-together application. Partnership with appears to be very vibrant of PTA, seems to be well-conceived, educational. The money is, that requested is specifically budgeted for, and so we approved this proposal from the Crossroads Farmer's Market, Rolling Terrace Partnership.
I'm going to do my best to represent the discussion, because I actually wasn't there for the committee meeting, but I did participate via notes, and Jackie's great notes coming out the other end. So this was a project that really was kind of organic, in the sense that it's a neighborhood project, no fiscal agent, no specific organization, but it seemed like a good idea. It brings neighbors together in a real homegrown effort to clean up. It's in an area where, you know, we don't, it's not Old Town, it's not, you know, the area that often gets a lot of attention, so that was a plus. And it seemed like there was, you know, a good amount of commitment behind it, and so we recommend it again, the full amount.
Number four is a musical, play musical, Love at Last Sight by John Guernsey, and it's a very modest, cost $500. John is Tacoma Park artist and musician, and he has, he wrote this play, musical, years ago, and has been working on refining it. He has already worked very hard a year or so ago, and actually managed to produce it at, in our local, in our community center here, in Auditorium. And he also managed to produce it in Green Belt, and actually raised some money in that effort. I know that he had funded a lot of it just out of pocket on his own, and he's worked very hard at this. He does reach out and actively engage teenagers and other youth to assist, it's really an educational type of project, and the limited amount of funds we felt could really help benefit him in achieving the goal. We, he doesn't have experience in grant applications, so we had a little bit of issue with that, but overall, we thought it was worthwhile, we did recommend that the project be approved.
The New Hampshire Gardens Citizen Association, Association Revitalization, seem to be very much in line with the Small Community Grant mission, to revitalize neighborhood associations. And it looks like they have a very well-thought-out effort to do just that, get their, communicate with their neighbors and their neighborhood, and get the word out. We did have a question to them, is how their newsletter would be continued after their funds ran out from the grant. We did approve it, but that would be a question for them to consider, how they're going to, since they said they didn't have enough internet communication ability, apparently, there's enough people that don't have, available to them readily. So the, that might be something they would think about, but as an effort to revitalize a neighborhood association, we thought it was very much worth giving, going forward with.
The next grant was submitted, the next grant proposal was submitted by Pyramid Atlantic, which, you know, it's a great organization, does a lot of good stuff in the communities, so right off the bat, that's a positive. The other positive here was that it really is an effort to link Tacoma Park and Silver Spring, you know, to get those two communities together, that seemed like a good thing. And it's multifaceted, it's both showing films, and then doing some workshops that are really interactive, so all of those seem terrific, they definitely have the capacity to do it, and so the committee approved the project at full funding.
The next one, which is number seven on here, is the Sligo Station Condominium Association, and they have an erosion reduction project that they requested funding for $2,000. They're trying to address some large issues of erosion, where their retaining walls are falling down, and they are right on the border of Sligo Creek Parkway, so the potential for impacting on Sligo Creek is predictable. They have reached out to other experts to help them create some plan for reducing erosion, including plantings and other kinds of improved landscaping. The big issue that we had with this is that it's a private entity, and we thought it should come under the responsibility of the Building Condominium Association or management company. They asked for $2,000, and we felt since there is some educational value to what they're talking about doing, in terms of reaching out to youth, to try to work with them on doing the plantings, and with, you know, dealing with respect for the Sligo Creek proximity, that there was some educational outreach in that, although they didn't quite make it as strong as they could have, they did talk about that, and so we felt for that reason, and the potential impact on Sligo Creek, that we would award them, and we approved $500 for them, for that, for those efforts.
The Tacoma Park Farmer's Market Marketing Program. We all value the Tacoma Park Farmer's Market greatly, and however, we did not approve the funding, because we felt it to be primarily an advertising effort, and not the necessarily educational, or particularly an area of public dollars to be spent on advertising. It's pretty much our feeling about it. So we did not approve.
The Tacoma Park Jazz Fest, this is, you know, an annual festival, and it's, I guess, been going for several years now. Our biggest issue with this one was that the proposal was difficult to follow. The answers to the questions didn't always answer the questions, and the format they presented it in was a little complicated, but we decided to approve it, because it is, you know, a well-established festival, and a good thing for the, for the community, and we wanted to earmark the funds, so that we were clear where they were actually going, and where they would be spent. And we also wanted to get the feedback, that they had, they are going to do a survey, and so we wanted to make sure that the feedback came back to, I guess it would go to the council. And so it's approved with a contingency, or we request approval with a contingency on those two items.
And I'd say it's a pretty strong contingency, in our view.
The last one, number 10, is Tacoma Park Play Committee. Their Play Day 2010 and Traveling Play Groups, they requested $1,000. We, their application, we thought, was so vague in concept, we really had a hard time figuring out exactly what they were doing, and what their plan was, it was so generalized, and couldn't grasp the intergenerational portion of it, there was, there was not enough specifics in the, in the proposal. It's unfortunate that they weren't able to stay, maybe give a little bit better idea about, since they were here just a bit ago. We just couldn't see the value in it, really, in our group, we couldn't see, it just wasn't obvious. And we didn't know how it would be advertised, that wasn't addressed, we didn't really know how they were determining where the groups would move around, there was a lot of vague concept about it, we changed to different locations in different parks, and we just didn't understand how they were going to get the word out on that, and how they were, they talked a lot about how they wanted people to, you know, go to new parks, and so how they were going to get people who lived in one area of Tacoma Park to go to another park was not clear either. So we, we recommended about 50% of what they were asking for, $500, just to keep them going, and hopefully take our comments to heart, and improve the application process for next time.
It says the project is not approved.
I'm sorry, we didn't approve it, you approved it.
The staff.
We did not approve it.
Yes.
Staff approved it. You're right, I'm looking at the wrong page. We did not approve it.
Okay. Who, is somebody, staff, just, I know, I, it looks to me, as I quickly went through these, like there was general agreement in the first part, it was only as we got toward the end, that there were some tweaks that were different from the staff report, the committee report. Sarah, or are you going to-
Sherry.
No, who, who, I don't know, I'm looking, was there somebody, who?
What?
I listen to the man's every word.
Yeah, I, I can-
Who from the staff was there?
I can do what the staff recommended. Essentially, as you said, there was agreement on, on most of the committee's recommendations. We did suggest with the Forest Park Communities Belford Cleanup Project, that there may be some funding or support for that project through the, the city's New Hampshire Avenue Community Greening Community Garden Project. It's essentially what they're, the community wants to do, is, it's clean up the, I believe it's the Spanish property that is affecting, you know, their community. And at the very least, the city could probably just provide some cleanup supplies for them. So for that reason, and because it was on private property, staff didn't recommend funding that, although certainly a worthy project. But we may be able to get, take some funding from this other program for that.
Okay. And that's private property, just like the, what was it, Sligo Station?
Although with probably a greater community benefit. But, and then the next area of difference was, was essentially the same, staff did not recommend, staff recommended no funding for the Sligo Station Condominium Association, because it was on private property, and we felt the condo should be paying for that from their reserves, although if there was an educational component that would assist with some public education, there may be some value in providing a little funding in the future, if they wanted to reapply, but we didn't recommend, staff didn't recommend funding. For the Farmer's Market, so-
I think we're agreeing on that.
Yes, agreed with the recommendation. For the Jazz Fest, staff didn't, did not support funding, recognizing though that contingency that the committee recommended, if we understood a little bit more about the workshops that the Jazz Fest talked about, maybe there would be some reason to provide a little funding, but generally, staff didn't see funding an ongoing program in this way would be a good idea for this particular grant program. And finally, for the Play Committee, staff, staff recommended some funding for the traveling play groups, $500 for the traveling play groups. But not, in their proposal, they had also talked about making a path from the middle school to, to the park, and that because the park is going to be under renovation, there would be no need to be creating that path, so staff didn't support that part of it. That makes sense.
So, I guess I'm not clear, if, if, if the end result of this were to be to approve some of the projects that had contingencies, how do those contingencies get worked through? Is that a lot of staff time, or a tiny bit of money? Is it something that the committee would have a part in? I just want to understand if it's just not a straight up or down approval with the usual process in terms of whatever staff feels is necessary for overseeing the grants, how does that get worked through? Yeah, sure.
I work with a small, very small group, and when we have made contingencies to a grant request, it is the responsibility of the individuals applying to prove that they have met the contingency. So for example, just to throw it out, the Jazz Fest, we had a contingency that they earmarked the workshops, that they listed and rated number five of their application. applications. Well, they would have to submit a plan. They would have to say, well, we're going to run the workshops A, B, and C, and these are going to be courtesy of and thanked kindly to the grants, Small Community Grant Program.
And they would submit those and you would anticipate?
They would have to submit them.
The committee would say, yes, this meets the contingency or no, it doesn't?
Probably, since we wrote it, since we wrote it. I would say that would be the approach. I'd like to say the number, the ser-, they had mentioned a survey, but they gave no results. And that was also part of our contingency. So they had in 2009, they took a survey. They didn't tell us what the survey said. So surely if you took one and you tallied them, then you could promptly provide the response to the survey. So that, in this case, as an example, it's two-part, where they have to come back and say, oh, well, here are our survey results from 2009. And this is how we're going to conduct the workshops and give credit to the program. And these are the brochures that we're going to have about the workshops and so forth. And then the funds could be, if the committee felt that they had met, then the funds would then be distributed. So you hold back the funds until the contingency is met. I think we had another one. So it's, it's, it's the time and effort though is on the people. And if they obviously feel they can't meet the contingency, well, then they don't get funded and hold for a part. Yeah, that's, that's the way it goes. We had a group in Honduras that sent us three different lists in Limpira, covered US dollars for workshop for creating radio novelas for educating teens on HIV disease. And we gave them a real hard time, actually, but in the end they met the contingencies and they got their funding. Because we couldn't, we couldn't fund equipment purchases. We could fund various things. And one of the things we said was, well, give us an example of how you're going to give credit to the institute. And so they provided that in writing as well. So you have to say, this is what you have to do. And no, this is not time or effort on the part of city staff, I should think.
Good answer. The one I'm sure the staff wanted.
Yeah.
And I guess one thing I would, I would want to make sure that we're clear on, if any of my colleagues want to comment, is the part about, on private property and whether there's an educational component to it for, what, two of these projects? Is, any thoughts on that in terms of how we might want to have the committee approach that if that were a contingency? Councilmember Collin?
The thing that I would say about, I think the Art for the People Project is the Westmoreland Wall.
Public property or is it?
I believe they have the permission of the owner and involvement of the owner on that property.
Right. But the question that we've been talking about is just whether or not it's public or private. But my point is, regardless of whether it's public or private, that I would think the threshold would be whether or not there's a, there's a public good. It may or may not be an educational project, but it's a public good. I don't know if there's an educational component to the Art for the People Project. I think that is part of what they do. But there's certainly a greater public purpose there in the beautification of a, of a wall that faces the, the public thoroughfare. And you have the, I think you have part of it as a, like a rain garden component and element to it too. So I would say, you know, from that perspective, it would be broader as a public purpose. Do you want me to make the rest of my comments now? I'm sure we just started with that.
The committee actually had, to, to the other proposals, a fair amount of discussion about the question of private property versus public. And I would recommend for next fiscal go-around year, that if it is the preference of this program not to fund private property type things, that that be clearly spelled out in the application requirements, just to cut to the chase.
I guess maybe any more thoughts on that point and then we'll come back for your comments. Yes, councilmember Ray.
I have the same, the same thing in my mind about what our position was on private property. And I think we should be clear about it and give the committee guidance and then, and then also the grantees in the future. I agree with Collin's perspective. I don't like the idea of saying, no, we would never fund anything on, on public property, I mean, on private property. But I think there should be a public good component to it. You might make the case, I don't, I didn't look at the proposal details, but the Sligo Station erosion reduction project, you could make the case that they're actually preventing soil erosion and runoff and stormwater into Sligo Creek. So.
That's why we said $500. In part, it was the commensurate with the public interest.
Right. That was the main reason.
Of that dollar, we looked at pot and said, their request, and said, well, 500 could be considered public support of something that could impact public land.
And I, and I just know that I can imagine, depending on how that's phrased, there's a potential for a number of other property owners who have had stormwater issues in the past to say, oh, well, you know, you always told me that it was, it was my responsibility, you know, to pass it from my property to the next. And if you're going to start handing out grants for doing this, then hey, what about me? And we could have 500 people in here saying, I got stormwater problems from the, you know, next door and I got to deal with it and it's passing. And it eventually gets to public property and eventually gets to the creek, so give me money.
But maybe that's, maybe that should be, you know, in this public good, we could actually say stormwater projects are not, don't qualify for this pot of money. If that's the thing that we think is going to come up a lot.
Councilmember Schultz and then councilmember Robinson.
I'd like the decision that you made with regard to the condominium for reducing it to 500 because of the educational component. I get concerned about using public grants to, for the public, for, for doing work on private property. Because almost anything you can think of, whether it's on private or public property, is designed to improve the situation. So to say, oh, as long as it meets a public good, doesn't really narrow anything down. Cleaning up somebody's backyard is going to be a public good, but it's something they should be cleaning up, not the taxpayers of the city of Tacoma Park. So I'm not making a decision here. I'm just sort of thinking out loud as that I think we might be headed in the wrong direction unless, like you were saying just a second ago, that it be pretty clear what, what the exceptions might be. For example, you have to have the full cooperation of the owner, obviously. But maybe they should be making a contribution out of their own pocket in, in concert with the grant. And, you know, something of that nature. Just an idea. I'm not saying this is what I would end up voting for or not. But I, it's just, it's a possible Pandora's Box. And there's something neat and nice and tidy about a public, the line between public and private, which is sometimes a nice, healthy line.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thanks for doing this, for going through these and making recommendations. That's exactly the kind of thing I appreciate in, in a committee, is putting yourself out there and, and putting out that effort. And the large grants, I, I kind of made a little, let's do 1% of our budget for large grants. And as I'm tallying this up, I'm seeing it's something like a 10th of a percent of our budget for small grants. So again, I'll put that out as a kind of guideline, just because that's kind of where it is, 10th of a, 10th of a percent. Not that we have to do that or that we agree, but I'm just sort of throwing that out. I also agree that the, if we're going to do something for the private sector, as we do for other, other private sector entities like the Business Association and others, there has to be this sense of partnership. So I'm agreeing with my colleagues. And the buzzword is leverage. How much can you get them to put up this? So, and I think you're right in saying it's, educational component's important. And I think the public good comment is a, is a good, good thing. If this takes off in, next year, a whole lot more applications come in and there are more than it looks like we're willing to fund, then you'll be in a, maybe a tougher, even a tougher position where you'll have to say, well, we only have this amount, or we're only going to fund this amount in that category. So again, thank you for doing what you did.
Councilmember Seale.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I also thank you for what you've done. I know this is a difficult kind of task to do. But I thank you for not only making recommendations of what we fund, but also for bringing up some of the issues that we've talked about tonight. In the interest of being finished on time, I hope my colleagues will remember that the committee is not making those decisions on whether we do public, public or private and all those. So that's maybe a discussion for another night. But for your recommendations, I thank you. I noticed it doesn't come up to the total amount of money that is available for this.
I guess we're a conservative group.
From last round.
Right.
But even, even with the last round and this round with the recommendations, it doesn't reach the amount that we had budgeted. And that's okay.
And that's a good thing. Yeah. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. I appreciate your.
Every red sheriff has a use that it'll lose.
No. And I, and I, I'm glad you gave a candid review of the, the applications and then let the council decide what we want to do. Thank you.
I'd just like to say I've enjoyed doing this very much. And if you're considering continuing the program, I certainly would be interested in continuing.
Yes.
Volunteering in the effort. Very interesting program.
Oh, is this the, may I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Councilmember Clay has commented. My wait?
Yeah, let's, you were patient. We said we'd, we'd do it. And then everybody got a little bit farther afield. So back to yours.
Well, I want to thank you for your work also. And, you know, I come into these, I say, okay, my job is not to second-guess the committee. My job is not to second-guess the committee. And, and so I do appreciate all the work that you do. I am going to support the, the city's recommendations. But, but, but saying that, what I want to say to you is that I think that there's a, there's probably a broader number of people who are in the city's recommendations because you recommended them, than maybe we would have come up with if we had, if we had been doing it ourselves. And I appreciate the breadth of perspective that you bring. And I want to say one of the reasons why I would support the city is because they do have to come back around and, and think about the, the issues of like what other kinds of things this might bring up, which is like, does this open up a whole Pandora's Box of people asking us about stormwater?
Responsibilities on your shoulders.
Yeah. If you heard me in the beginning, or if you hear when I did the council comments and, and talked about this conversation I had earlier this week, just about this very sort of stormwater issue. And also that they know where there are other pots of money. So those components.
Oh, well.
Right.
Those components along New Hampshire Avenue and recommending maybe funding through a different mechanism than this mechanism to keep more of this open. So that was all I wanted to say.
And if I could just add, the thought that occurred to me as, as we were talking about this was, there's, there are two different ways to approach the, the question of the public contribution, public good, if it's on private property and how you split that. And one way would be to say, well, we weren't clear about that, for whatever reason, going into this. And therefore, there's some, some ambiguity and some different ways to approach this. And therefore, maybe we should say there are theories, these increments that we could do on these projects. And maybe add in something about a match. And we'll do that, but we'll clarify how we want to do this. And the other approach would be to say, well, we weren't clear about that. Sorry, our bad. We're not going to do that until we clarify. Therefore, we won't do these projects. We'll clarify. And if people want to resubmit, then we can go that route. And so I, I started out with the, thinking the first way was probably the way to go. And I ended up thinking the second way was the way to go. So we could, we could go either one of those paths. And either one would be a policy direction that we could give. And if you want to make your comments.
Oh, I just had a couple of questions. One, actually, councilmember Clay, address, which is I'm just, I assume that the city staff recommendations would carry the day. But I am curious as to how, how you make that determination about, since we do have some discrepancies between the committee and the city, how you decide that, just as a point of information.
If you could figure out how this council decides anything.
That's a much larger question for disclosure here.
That's what made me laugh myself. You had other questions?
The other question I had was just whether you have any sense of whether this would happen again, you know, given all the pressures on budgets and such things. I was wondering about that in next year's budget. Do you have any sense about that?
I wonder what the city manager thinks and what she's going to recommend. And we don't know yet. I would say that my approach is that I, I like this process. I like, I think I will like the results that we'll get from it. I like what it says to the community about what we're trying to do and that we've regularized a process so that people know what it is that we have available, what we would expect in return. And hopefully, we can create a lot of good partnerships that way. In these budget times, I'm not sure whether it's something that we can continue to do. But I think we would all certainly like to. And it just comes down to benefits and trade-offs and where we go with this. City manager have any comments? Are you going to keep, keep, keep until we get your proposed budget?
We're still sorting through projected revenues and expenditures for next year. Kind of my, my first blush attempt is to probably try to retain the program, but probably reduce the funding. Kind of part of a process of just sort of scaling everything back for next year.
Thank you. I have a question to your comment question. There, there's a wide variety in terms of the application, the thoroughness of each application. And some of them were seemingly professionally done and others were apparent that it was their first time ever doing this. And they have a chance to come back and do it because we, we had the initial go-around in January. When did we do the first? We only had three applica-, was it last fall? We had, we had three. And so the ones that resubmitted took our comments to heart. They did a really great job and they addressed the issues that we talked about. And so they came back with a really strong application. What I'm wondering, are these applications put, available to the public, to other people who want to look them up and, and use them as a guideline?
And the, and the report that we've written.
Yes.
Public as well.
Okay. Because it's a terrific learning tool, I think, for people who aren't familiar with going through this kind of process.
Yeah. Councilmember Clay.
Well, I want to say I actually appreciated the comments you made about people who didn't quite have professional grant skills, because that is in fact what the Small Community Grant Program should be all about. And I would support that over people who had professional grant writers, because quite frankly, if they have a professional grant writer, they don't need a $2,000 grant. But what you might, what we might consider next year is having a little workshop, just a little mini workshop for the people who want to fill it out. And you could impart all of this great information to them before they do their application.
That's, that's a wonderful idea. That would be, I mean, like the play group, I was listening to their public comments. I was just going, oh, wow. That's a whole different scenario that they presented than anyone would have guessed in reading the application. We came up with chalk and bubbles, toddlers, $500 for renting equipment. Yeah. And it just didn't speak to us as to what it was that the group was doing. And yeah, that they're a group that really could benefit from a workshop, I would think, groups like that.
I'd be happy to participate in that. I think that's a great idea.
I would too. And if there are any committee, if you do, do go forward and you want to have recommendations for guiding people as to what you will or will not fund, is public, private, all this kind of thing, or including the grant named in the program that they're going to get so that they give good public support to this program. You know, I would be happy to be involved in any fine-tuning meetings that the city might choose to have.
Okay. I think we've got a number of directions we could go. Would somebody like to make a proposal for comprehensive approach to this and we can go forward? We could, we could say, follow the committee. We could say, follow the staff. We could say, follow the, only those which are agreed to by both. We could say something else. Well, we, we need to give some direction to the staff. And it is next week's agenda that it's on. it's on, for a resolution to set this in motion. So, that's my request.
So, in keeping with the... I don't... We could do whatever we want. I don't really want to get into a battle of mixing or matching. I just want to pick one or the other. And so, I would propose we move forward with the staff proposals for the reasons that I outlined earlier.
Comments? Councilmember Wright?
I would agree with that with one exception, which is that Tacoma Park Jazz Fest, that it... There's a set of specific contingencies that the committee outlined, and I think that it sounded like the staff would be comfortable if those contingencies were met. That was my sense, so that was my... The one place where I thought we should add that in.
City manager, have some comments?
Sarah, we have a different sense of what went into the staff's thinking, but I know part of it.
It's not one of the people who reviewed all the applications and voted, but the city does provide considerable in-kind support to the Jazz Fest through public works, police services. So, at least from my own personal perspective, I think we contribute a great deal financially already, but I'm not sure if... Sarah, did you have any comments you wanted to make, since you were part of the staff review committee?
The only observation I made when I was looking at the grant was, if you look at the expenditures, they have an in-kind contribution from the police department, which is then counted as... It's counted as an expenditure, and the grant is used to offset those expenditures with the revenue, so you have...
So, we're paying...
So, you have, yeah, you have a number that's not real, being reversed by, in theory, real money. So, that was the observation I had made regarding that particular application.
Councilmember Robinson, any comments?
My point is that recommendations, I think, incorporates a good bit of what the committee had, and it refines it a little bit.
Councilman Seaman?
I'm comfortable with the staff recommendations, except for the Jazz Festival. I think that's an important event in the city. I know that they've been struggling under new leadership for the last couple of years, and I think that the council should provide some support to this grant process, whether 2,400 is the right amount or something else. But I think I appreciate the work of the committee, and I would go with, in that case, the recommendation of the committee.
Any thoughts on... It sounds like we're heading toward the staff, and the only question is Jazz Fest or not.
I think I'd probably agree with councilmember Seaman's with regard to the Jazz Fest, and otherwise, be comfortable with the staff's recommendation. My feeling is, in general, and I'll be brief, is that the application process is... Or the application is not complicated. The criteria are simple to understand, and clearly, the committee is happy to talk to the applicants informally and help them, nurture them in the right direction. And this is a repeat process that's already going through. This is the second time, but in doing it in the future, so that it seems to me that when you come to a point of making a decision, if the applicant just really can't get it straight to you, that you can understand it, then it just should be denied with the advice of coming back, rather than trying to muddle through. Because clearly, there's going to be some groups who aren't sophisticated, that don't have professional grant writers, and those do... Those people deserve to get all the help they can get in helping them clarify their grant. But at some point, we've got to make a decision and just sort of say, "Well, come to the workshop. Maybe next time we can fund it." Know what I'm saying? Just sort of not muddy it too much. But that's all I'm going to say at this point in time. I just think I'd like to keep the process simple and clear, that we've got... These are the criteria. If you meet them, you've got a good chance of getting it. If you don't, you don't. That's having been said, I basically think I would support the staff's recommendation and allow for the contingency for the Jazz Festival, and hopefully, they'll figure it out. If they don't, well, there's always next time.
If there's a next time.
There will be a next time someday.
Yes. And I think I could go along with the staff recommendations and the contingency for the Jazz Fest. I was tempted to make it interesting and say, "No contingency with the Jazz Fest," and then it would have been 3-3, and then we would have to have waited for councilmember Snapper next week when we vote on the resolution. I think if we go forward with the contingency for the Jazz Fest, that we could go forward with that for next week. And I heard that as well, which made my possibility for a time vote moot, so.
But then I understood that if you were to go forward with that, then in the final vote next week, that you would then be asking the committee to review to make sure they've met the contingency.
Yes.
We'll let the other people know, too.
And you can assign that to the ones who weren't here. So, thank you again for all your work, and we look forward to having the opportunity to clarify some things and work with you, setting up the grant-writing seminar, or whatever it's going to be, ahead of time for ones in the future, and continuation of this process. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
And staff has everything you need for the resolution for next week? Okay. Then we will move on to the consent agenda.
Move it second.
Which is items A, C, and D. Two of those are single-reading ordinances on rescinding and repurchase of the three police vehicles, the execution of contracts for engineering and construction services for sidewalks, and a resolution providing for an appointment to the recreation committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That... Oh, sorry. Sorry. We'll call.
Mayor also moved it second.
Josh moved it, and I second.
So, I'll call the roll. Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper? Councilmember Schultz?
Okay. That passes unanimously. We will now move to the formerly item 2B, which is a resolution adopting the ranking system for prioritizing sidewalk installation and ADA compliance projects with which councilmember Seaman has removed, and we had a fairly long discussion on this last week, and I know that you had your disagreements with this.
Yeah, I had my disagreements, and I'd just like to reiterate that I'm concerned that this does not include all the heavy pedestrian sources and destinations that we know of in the city. It was restricted to the schools that are in the safe routes to schools list, and it does not include nurseries. We were told last week that they didn't include nurseries because it wasn't on that list, and that we don't know where the nurseries are. But of course, nurseries are permitted facilities, so we would have a fairly easy way to find out where the nurseries are located. There are other heavy pedestrian sources and destinations that are also not on the safe routes to school list. I think that we get grants to supplement tax revenues, to reduce the burden to taxpayers, and it's good that we do that. But I don't think that the requirements of the grant should restrict an analysis of the city needs and the community needs, such as we're doing with the sidewalk and ADA evaluation. So, I think it's... It would be important to include the other sources and destinations of pedestrians, such as the churches and the nurseries. So, for that reason, I will vote against this.
Any other council comments? Councilmember Wright?
I just quickly want to say I appreciate the staff's effort to reword the second-to-last and third-to-last whereas clauses to accommodate the input around community ideas and the flexibility of the ranking. And I'll vote for this based on their good rewrite.
Any other comments? Councilmember Robinson?
I have a question for councilmember Seaman. How do you see those rewrites of the second-to-last and third-to-last? Does that address your concern to some extent, or not enough, clearly not enough of an extent?
Again, I think the purpose of the prioritization was to have a formula that we could use, and it's nice that we have a safety valve in there, but I think it's, again, I think it's ridiculous to create an algorithm that is tailored towards the grant, rather than tailored towards community needs.
I agree with that. I agree with that, and so, but I'm having trouble seeing the grant process reflected in this.
It's reflected in the prioritization itself, in the algorithm of the prioritization.
Yeah.
Any other council comments? Is there any public comment? Okay.
I'll move the...
Okay. To move for councilmember Wright, second by councilmember Clay. Any other comments? This is a resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. That carries four to two.
Mayor Williams, last week when you were... Was it last week you were gone, or was it two weeks?
Two weeks.
I don't know if you watched or if you heard, but you left, and councilmember Snapper was acting as mayor pro tem. And I think the first vote we had, we kind of gave him the business by not saying aye, but we said yep, and okay, and yahoo, yahoo, and it kind of rattled him. So, I just want you to pass on that we weren't trying to get... Really get him too bad.
And you might also make note that we didn't finish early when he was chair.
I was hoping that we finished nice and early tonight, and we could say that while he wasn't here, he must have been the problem.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, I'd like to suggest then, since we are running behind, that maybe we just skip the break and finish our last item.
I suggest... I'll second that.
I would look to the city manager and the city clerk for any indication from you all. Sometimes I want to give you all an opportunity to get up and take a break.
Powerpoint, too, so if you take a five-minute break at the very, very moment.
We will take a... How about, according to that clock, we will be ready to go in seven minutes at 9:35.
And we'll be ready for you.
Okay. So, we'll take a short break. I didn't do that.
You didn't either.
You want me to turn these lights on up? Yeah.
Should we wait for councilmember?
Nope. Nope. Well, who knows? He might have gone home early.
It's the new cruelty.
Okay. So, I'll keep this short and swift. My name's Carmen Lem. I'm here to talk about the Maple Avenue corridor improvement project. There's two parts to it. I'd like to talk about the community outreach process that we did in order to arrive at the improvement option that we're presenting with this PowerPoint. So, it's a three-part presentation. I'll give you a little bit of background, and then we'll go through the community outreach process, and then I'll talk about, more in detail, the improvement options. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the area, but just as a reminder, you can kind of see it. It's a half, about half a mile section of Maple Avenue. That's our study area. The community center is right here, so we're starting at Philadelphia right here, going up, and that's Sligo Creek Parkway. This study is funded by the Community Block Grant Program. The goal of the program is to benefit low and moderate-income households. And for Maple Avenue area, according to the 2,000 census data, a minimum of 51% of households in the area are considered low to moderate income, and that's why the area is qualified for this block grant program. And we have a very wide scope for the study. It's to basically identify any type of capital projects that would improve the quality of life for residents on Maple Avenue. The construction budget that we have, it's $68,100. The overall budget that we had to begin with was $75,500. So, about $7,400 were used in hiring consultants and preparing the workshops and so on. Oh, and to remind everyone, the money needs to be spent by June 9 of this year, so there's a very short timeframe that we're working with. And so, just to quickly refresh everyone's minds about Maple, you can see that there's a lot of green area. We've got the Tacoma Piney Branch Park, Sligo Creek, Oppo A Daniels, community center, we have the school, Pepco, we have the hospital at the end. And along the corridor, they're mostly multifamily residential. There is no single family dwelling on this section of Maple Avenue. So, like I mentioned, we have the community center, the school. This is a view looking towards Sligo, and this is looking towards... Sorry. This is looking towards Philadelphia. That's looking towards Sligo. You can see that we already have sidewalks on both sides, very well landscaped area, lots of trees, and there's utility poles and Pepco lighting on the one side of the road. Wait. Okay, sorry. Okay. There is a fair mixture of residential buildings in the area. You have the two-story walk-ups. You have three to four stories, a really big high-rise building like Park Ritchie. They're mostly rental buildings, but we do have a few condominiums in the area, and we have our little commercial area at Sherman, three retailers. We also have some shops at the ground floor of Park Ritchie. That's not something that everyone knows about. We have an informal park space that's at Sligo Creek that's not programmed, and we have a trail area. And so, the outreach process is part of the Community Block Grant Program. It's a big component of it. We started out by setting up three workshops at the community center. At the first two workshops, we realized that the turnout, it's adequate. We have 20 to 30 people, but it's not representation of the residents that are living on Maple. So, then we started going to the individual apartment buildings. We're going to their lobbies and setting up shops there, and actually inviting people to participate and talk to them right there in their own apartment. And so, with that process, we had a great turnout. We spoke to over 200 participants, which it's a much better... We realize that it's a much better way of talking to folks of different ages, different backgrounds. We also have three translators that are always going with us, Mharik, because we have a large Ethiopian population, Spanish, and also Russians. And all the flyers and announcements were all translated. And these are just some of the pictures of the workshops that we attended, sorry, that we... I hosted, and these are some of our participants, our Russian translator and also city staff, Paul Grenier. And this is how a typical lobby, I guess a lobby workshop goes. We set up shop at their lobby, we give them food, and we give them drinks, and then they come by, and then we grab the opportunity to talk to them and explain to them what we're doing. We're usually there between 4:00 to 7:00. So, we have... It's a little dark, but you have teenagers that are just coming home from school. You have people coming from... Coming home from work, and we have parents with babies. We get all sorts of people when we're out there talking to people right at their homes. So, just different examples. This is our Mharik translator. Without the translators, we really probably wouldn't have been able to talk to these folks. It would be very unlikely for someone, for example, a teenager, to come to a community meeting at night. So, with the new approach, it was very good at reaching people at different ages and different levels. And this is a sidewalk that we did, again, because we're out there in an environment where people are comfortable with. We're not dragging them in the community center. We talk to different people of different ages, and these are just... are just some teenagers that are hanging out. And, and this is one of the last workshop that we had. Um, Lieutenant Rick Bowers attended because public safety was identified as a big concern on Maple Avenue. And so through a series of workshop, we're able to tailor each workshop to really answer, um, the participants' questions. And now, I'm gonna turn it over to Linda Walker, the manager of landlord tenants, and she's gonna go through what their department's doing.
Yeah, Carmen asked me to, uh, go over some of the activities, um, that, uh, landlord tenant has been doing on Maple Avenue. As you remember, uh, tenant organizing is a big goal that we have here, not just on Maple Avenue, but in all the wards. And on Maple Avenue, uh, there have been three tenant associations that were formed. Um, Parkview Towers, which is seven six six seven, uh, seventy-six hundred, which is the Park Ritchie, and the Edinburgh, which is right across the street from the community center. Um, about a week or so ago, we got a call from, uh, some tenants at seventy-seven ten, and they would like to form a tenant association in their building. Um, the three tenant associations that I mentioned all need to be reregistered. Some of those, um, tenant associations, the leadership has, have moved out of the building, so it's important that we re-register the associations every three years. So we are in the process of doing that. Uh, we also are conducting tenant rights classes. Not only we do, do we do that here in the community center, but we've, uh, taken to going out to the properties, just like Carmen mentioned, uh, to go to some of the meetings that the managers have for their tenants, as well as to, uh, sit in the lobby during the evening hours when people are coming and going to distribute, uh, our tenant rights information. And we already did that at the Park Ritchie, and it was quite successful, so we're gonna continue to do that at, um, the next property that we choose will be the Essex House. We've been doing first-time homebuyer classes now for a few years, and although we've had a few participants from Maple Avenue, we don't really have as many as we would like. And so we are gonna be targeting, um, the outreach to, um, the first-time homebuyer classes that will be starting in April. We have one in English and Spanish, and this is a picture of one of the classes that we have. Um, the English ones are, are very well-attended, thirty-five people to forty people usually attend. The Spanish ones, uh, we've had a little more difficulty getting, uh, Spanish participants, but, uh, we, we are, um, advertising now in the Spanish newspaper to, to get more attendance. This year, we're also doing, um, a financial planning and investment program. Uh, what we've been finding in the first-time homebuyer class is that there are a lot of families that need help in budgeting and really saving for the future so that they can become homebuyers. And so, um, starting in May, we have two classes that we're offering, and we're gonna do a lot of outreach to the Maple Avenue, um, residents. The, there are three projects here on, uh, Maple Avenue that I'd just like to, um, bring you up to date with. Seventy-six eleven Maple Avenue, I was approached last week by a resident, a homeowner who lives there. This is the condominium. And, um, they are gonna be needing to do balcony renovations, uh, which means that there's gonna be a special, uh, assessment that is gonna, that each homeowner is gonna have to pay between two to three thousand dollars to get their balcony renovated. And, um, this is a safety issue, and so what I did, um, she was concerned because there are a lot of seniors who live in that building. And, uh, I contacted the, uh, Single Family Rehab Loan Program, the contact we have there, and I spoke to her and brought up the project, and she said that there are a number of condominiums in Montgomery County who have used the Single Family Rehab Program to, uh, for exactly these kinds of situations. So what would happen, have to happen is the tenant association would have to apply to the county for a loan, and, uh, each homeowner then would be evaluated individually. But it would be the tent, um, excuse me, the, um, condominium association that would have to approach the county on that. So, um, at least we had a, um, you know, some kind of remedy for the situation. What this would mean is that the homeowner could probably take out a, a low-interest loan through the county and pay back, um, you know, either, you know, over a longer period of time, or maybe even when they resold their unit. So, um, that's something that I'm sure the condominium association will be investigating. But I just wanted to, um, let you know about that. Seventy-six twenty Maple Avenue, um, if you recall, this is, um, a hundred and eighty-five units, and they applied for a, uh, three million dollar, three million, two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar loan through the Green retrofit program for multifamily housing, and this is administered by HUD. Uh, this is a Section Eight property, which means that they have property-based Section Eight vouchers. It's, uh, not like you, it's not like the regular voucher program. You have to, uh, have a in-house Section Eight approval. So, um, they are on the, the final stages of applying for this loan, and it looks like they're gonna be getting it. Um, and so they will find out for sure by the end of March. What will happen once they get this loan is they're going to be replacing eight hundred windows in this building, and they're gonna be overhauling their HVAC system, uh, which includes partial conversion to a water source geothermal system, which they hope will, um, uh, will achieve fifty percent reduction in its energy, uh, demand. So this is a real energy-efficient, um, renovation that they're looking forward to doing, and, uh, they've already notified the residents who live in this property that, that this is coming down the pike. So in case, uh, you hear about it, then, um, they hope to get that approval, uh, in March. And construction will start, um, as soon as they get the approval, and they hope to have it completed at the end of twenty-ten. The last project is seventy-six ten Maple Avenue. Uh, as you recall, this is property owned by Montgomery Housing Partnership, and it's taken them a little longer to, uh, get their financing, but they feel that they're at the end stages of that. And, um, they expect to close on the financing in mid-April. Uh, the construction for the property is gonna start in May, and they've selected their general contractor, which is, um, Bezuto Construction. MHP has worked with Bezuto on many of their projects, and they, um, have a lot of confidence in this, in this, um, construction firm. Uh, so that, that, um, project is, uh, coming to fruition here. And what's exciting about it is that it's now vacant and, you know, pretty ugly building, but it's, there's gonna be fifty-three new rental units once they complete that.
Okay. So now I'd like to talk about the improvement options, um, that staff has identified for the Maple Avenue study. Um, coming from, I guess, all the meetings and the workshops and the emails and phone calls that I've had with numerous residents, we have gathered a lot of feedback, and there were many, many improvement options that were presented to us. Um, some of them were capital projects such as streetlights, and some of them were programming such as a youth program, or, um, there are ideas that could be treated such as speed bomb that should go through a different channel, um, rather than the CDVG fund. So we have narrowed it down to four options that I'm presenting, um, and they are all capital projects because, um, CDVG fund has to be spent on capital projects. Um, and the first one, I will go through each one of them in detail after, um, but the first one is a basketball court at the community center. The second one is a community garden at seventy-six twenty Maple Avenue. That's the Franklin Building. A third one is streetlights along Maple. And then, as this, I guess, a supplementing program, it could, um, street, streetscape improvements such as street furniture and landscaping, um, could be done, uh, with any remaining funds. So the idea of a basketball court really evolved from the identified need of a gym. Many residents I spoke to really see a gym in the area. It could be teenagers that are looking for a space to hang out after school. But I've talked to folks who have lived here for a long time when there was supposed to be a gym, and they're renters, but they're still renting in the area, and they're still wondering if that gym is ever gonna come in the area. Um, there are older, older, um, residents in the area that think that, well, we seem to have a lot of youth problem in the area. There's kids hanging out on Sherman. If we give them something constructive to do or something that's active that would make them tired, maybe they would stop hanging out on the corners. Um, so, and that's, that's how the idea of a, a gym, or I guess a basketball court came, um, into mind. We did look at the possibility of having a gym facility or just having a gym room. The funding would allow purchasing the gym equipment, but in consultation with recreation department staff, there isn't any room in the community center that could be used as, uh, a gym room or a workout room. Um, and so since there's no interior space to do that, we started looking outside, um, and that's why we came up with the idea of a court. Um, the space that we're looking at is just outside the community center. It's where the rec bus is currently parked at, um, right about here, near Grand Avenue. So this is the parking space. Um, the square area that you're looking at, it's about twenty feet by fifty feet. Um, you notice that there is a sidewalk that continues from the one entrance, and it goes back in here, and there's a planting area and a large tree right here. Um, I'm showing you a very preliminary, preliminary concept plant. Um, this plan looks at not demolishing anything that's in the area. We're keeping the sidewalk. We're keeping the landscape median. This is where the parking is right now, so that's about twenty feet by fifty feet. What we're doing is we're adding a landscaped area right here, partially to accommodate the sloping, um, but also to make sure that there's a buffer between where kids are gonna play, um, and where cars are. Um, there'll be a fence around the court because we don't want any balls hitting on any nice cars. Um, and we could also put in some benches in the area. And there will be some regrading that's needed. Um, it's, it has a bit of a job in the area, and for a project like this that I'm showing you, it would be approximately forty thousand dollars. And that includes all the equipment, all the construction work, retaining wall, landscaping, and so on. Um, and since we have a sixty-eight thousand dollar budget, we can actually also consider a bigger court that is actually two-standard, um, where you can have formal games. And we have to keep in mind that there is a large tree. We're still in consultation with Public Works. We have not had any feedback as to whether removing the tree would be feasible. Um, so, but that is one option to consider, and it is also an option that the rec department staff prefers. And just to show you another option, um, there are different ways that we can put the court. There, there is quite a bit of space in here. If we don't wanna get too close to the tree, we can consider moving the sidewalk. So what I'm trying to say is that this is preliminary. Um, but there is still a lot of design details that we need to go into, but I'd like to introduce this as an option. And we, you can see that it will bring additional recreation opportunities to the area. It's not just for kids. It could be for formal games, or also for any pickup games. Could be a spot for hangout. Um, and construction, if we're not doing any demolition, will start at forty thousand dollars. And the second option that I'd like to introduce is the community garden is identified as a top priority by the community. Um, there are many apartment dwellers on Maple. They do not have access to a little front yard or a little backyard, so if we have a community garden for them, that would be their little plot of green space. Um, and it could also be a great opportunity for any social gathering and inter, interaction. Um, the site that we're looking at is seventy-twenty Maple Avenue, so that's the Franklin Building. Um, we're actually looking at their parking lot. Um, we're considering an urban community garden. It's at the end of their parking service, um, where it's less steep, and we're looking to accommodate about thirty planters in the area. Um, we've been partnering with MNCP PC on this. The city is already working with them on this Sligo Mill Park. Um, that's on Orchard Avenue. It's a very successful community garden program. There's a waiting list to get onto that, um, community garden. Um, this is a little different since we're looking at a parking service. Um, these are two-by-six planters. They're self-watered. Somehow you only need to fill them three times a year. Water go in there, and it's, there's some sort of mechanism so that plants will get watered naturally, and that would take care of a, of a lot of problems that they were dealing with over at Sligo, um, having access to water and so on. Um, and for fifteen thousand dollars, uh, we could purchase thirty planters. We will be partnering with MNCP PC. The only contribution, I guess, that the city would need to make is the purchasing of the planters. Um, the county will be providing the soil, the labor. They will also be running the community garden program. They're currently running the Sligo, Sligo Mill program. Um, and so with fifteen thousand dollars, we, it's a good leverage to actually get a lot more out of, I guess, the county and being able to provide a program for the area residents. Um, we'll have to enter into at least with Franklin residents. I have been in contact with them for a while, and they're very interested. And like, um, what Linda's just mentioned, they're doing a massive green overhaul on their building. So this actually fits very nicely into what they're looking into doing right now, and they're very interested. Um, we have not determined how, how the program would work, but it's likely that Franklin residents will be given priority, and, um, the, maybe it'll be a thirty, seventy, um, racial, or fifty-fifty, depending on how we work it out. But plots that are not open to Franklin residents would be open to the rest of the Maple Avenue residents. And the last option that we're looking at is streetlights. Um, it's identified as a very high priority, um, by the residents. Uh, safety is a big concern, um, especially near the area where Sherman and Maple is, where all the shops. Um, there are many public facilities on Maple. We have a school. We have a hospital. We have the community center, the library. There's a lot of pedestrians. There are many buses on Maple. There are also buses on Philadelphia. So there's also, there's always a lot of people walking, and you can also take Maple to go to the metro. So it's a high pedestrian traffic street, and, and lighting has been identified as a big issue. But keep in mind that when we performed the outreach, it was last summer, and since December or January this year, um, Pepco started their relamping program. Um, as I mentioned before, on the south side of Maple, there are these Cobra Lights, um, on utility poles. Public Works staff has not been able to confirm whether these lights have actually be updated yet, but staff have walked out to Maple in the evening and find that lighting seems to have improved, and also there's a lot more floodlights that are, have been installed in apartment buildings, parking lot areas. So in general, it feels like the lighting condition has improved on Maple. Um, I have been working with apartment managers and through emails, trying to contact residents and gather any feedback I can about the improved lighting situation. And I have heard from residents that they do find that, yes, lighting seems to be improved. I don't see a big difference, but now that you mention it, it does seems to be better. Um, and so that's the kind of feedback I've been hearing from folks. Um, and besides the lighting, um, the And besides the lighting, the proposed lighting, we'll also be working with Public Works to install Cobra lights on these utility poles that's right across from the community center because from our walkthrough, right in front of the community center is the darkest spot on Maple. I don't know if you guys have noticed. You go out there, it's pitch black.
Right outside the front of the building.
Right outside the front of the building. There's no lights. But since going through the process with Papco usually takes a long time, so that it's not something that we would be doing with this grant, but we'll do it as part of the planning teamwork. And we have been meaning to do a light inventory on Maple to determine whether it is sufficient, but with all the snow, you're not going to get accurate lighting with the reflection. So, that's been delayed. And if we do go ahead with installation, it would likely be on the north side of Maple. Staff have considered the possibility of solar-powered lights. It's partially because there are many planting and many trees on Maple, and if we were to trench through that area, either it could be complicated. And so, we don't have a lot of experience with a solar light. Public Works has installed a few, but they're a few generations older and they don't work very well. But as we all know, technology do improve very quickly on these things. So, we can't really compare something that's a few generations old to something that's new and available now. But these are some of the options that Papco's providing. You have a big panel on the top. The panel could be attached to a corner separated from the pole and attach to a corner of a building where you would get better access to sunlight. But it is a very new type of lighting. I tried speaking to someone at the county level about it, and they have had no experience with it either. So, we could hire a consultant to see whether Maple Avenue, it's a good spot for it. But we also have the option of just doing good old-fashioned lights with underground wiring. These are the lights that we recently completed on Holton Lane off New Hampshire Avenue. To give you an idea, Holton Lane was, has a budget of $70,000, and we installed seven lights. Whipping out sidewalk and redoing driveway aprons are expensive. So, I assume that with the $68,000, we're probably likely to get six regular lights with underground wiring. Solar lights are also expensive. They're about $700 per light. And then, there's a bit of construction, although you don't need to go through any trenching. So, we're also likely just to get six lights. Well, we're getting six lights either way, so that's something to consider. And remember that Maple Avenue is half a mile. If we put in six lights, that means you will not be able to service the entire area. You're likely to be only able to focus on a small portion of Maple. And as I mentioned, if there's any remaining funding from the options, we could always spend it on street furniture and landscaping. So, we have $2,000, $3,000. That is where the funding will likely go towards. And so, tonight, I'd like to ask the council to endorse the proposed priority ranking: basketball court, community garden, streetlights, and then any streetscape improvements. Keep in mind that for certain items, because they are within or under the $68,000 budget, you could do, for example, you could do a basketball court with community garden. For the options such as streetlights, you're likely, that would likely to be the only option that you could fund because it's a very expensive capital project. And I would also like to hear if there's any preferred options, if there's any, one of the options that seem to be more desirable. And so, I'd like to hear that from the council members. Remind you again, it's funding at $68,000 a hundred, and the project has to be completed by June 9.
Thank you.
Should we turn up the lights?
Yes, yes. I'll make an observation and see what my colleagues think. My sense is that if we have to extend by June, streetlights aren't going to happen, and they're not going to give us that much bang for the buck, and we're not sure which way we want to go anyway. I like the basketball court idea. I like the idea of putting it in on the existing space. It's narrow, so what, you can still play. Meanwhile, if down the road in the future, a basketball court or a gym gets in at the, what's now Washington Adventist University in concert with the Adventist Hospital, if a pool goes in there and then the pool next door here goes away and that becomes a gym, there's other possibilities. Meanwhile, we haven't torn anything up and taken out a tree or done other things. It seems like a quick and easy solution that gets a big bang for the buck. I like the planter boxes. I think that's in keeping with a lot of things. I'll say, just because it came up in terms of the type of lighting and that the Franklin is doing a lot of projects, my poster child for how not to do exterior lighting is the Franklin, the existing on the Franklin. So, I would propose that first priority be the basketball court, second priority be the planter boxes, and the third priority be any leftover money goes for street furniture and landscaping. Other comments? Councilmember Wright?
So, I had a couple of questions related specifically to the basketball court and then a comment related to it. I love the analysis overall. I thought it was very helpful. I will say that I didn't think the presentation about the other activities of the tenant landlord work was really appropriate to the agenda item, so I think it just made our meeting go long as a learning for us. So, the basketball question is, so there's a basketball court that's not that far away, and it's about to be refurbished as a part of the Piney Branch Tacoma Park refurbishment. So, I just wanted to kind of understand the thinking there. Is it that that basketball court is actually used all the time in that capacity? Is it that kids would feel, or some subset of kids would feel safer to use a court that's next to the community center? Like, I just want to, I want to try and understand why because it's really not that, you know, you could almost throw a baseball from, well, maybe I used to be able to almost throw a baseball from.
A lot of the persons I speak to are not actually aware that there are basketball courts back in the field area. And some parents think that if it's right there, I can see them. That's great. If I cannot see them, then it's not safe. There's county policy where the lights do turn off. They turn it off because they don't want anyone to be playing in the area. So, when it gets dark, then you cannot play anymore. In the summer, that's fine. In the winter, that gets pretty early, so around 4:00 p.m., you cannot play anymore. So, that's some of the things I've heard from kids that do play there, and then they say, well, there isn't, there are courts, but they're not upgraded. There's no water fountain. There isn't much there.
But that is all going to be, I think, rectified by the renovation.
Exactly. But we also have to keep in mind that when that renovation happens, and it's going to start soon and take place for probably two years, there will be no facility for any kids to play on for that period of time. And just speaking with rec staff, Eric here, and one of the thing about playing basketball is that you want it to be seen. You want to hang out. You want it to, your friends to see you. So, it's a function of sports, but it's also a function of gathering as teenagers. And I think for that, and for that space, it's very well, it's very visible, and it's not somewhere that we have to worry about teenagers hiding and doing things that we don't want them to be doing because it is very visible. And that's why we think that's a good spot. And there is an option of doing something relatively inexpensive, just keeping with the existing area and not taking anything out. So, and that's why it's a good option. We could make it a full-size court, take everything away, take out the planters, take out the planting area, take out the sidewalk. Or we can just stick with the existing area and put something there that kids could play, and it could be pickup games.
Yeah. So, the two comments I have is, one, I would potentially be, depending on what the cost is, favor of actually making a full court, court as opposed to a shrunken court. Having played a fair bit of basketball actually makes a significant difference. If you want to play five-on-five, you're going to end up with that smaller court. Kids aren't really willing to play four-on-four. The second is, it'd be very interesting to see, because it sounds like it's very much in concept, if there's any way to design it that we could actually have the option of putting a bubble over it in the future. Because there are these inflatable bubbles. They use one, a really large one at Carter Baron in DC to cover the tennis courts. But it may be, I know that Washington Adventist is talking about building a gym, but I don't have a lot of faith that anything the hospital tells us is actually going to come to fruition in the way that they say it's going to come to fruition based on past experience. So, be interested to know if it's just possible to design it. I'm not saying we should spend the money to put a bubble over it now, but would be interesting to have some information about it, sort of in my comments.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, I'd like to, thank you, Carmen, for that presentation.
Thank you.
And Linda. And I'm with your priority list, and I'm with the mayor of bag the lights for now because it's not enough to do it justice. Maybe if we wait another year, the technology will get even farther along.
Yes.
I don't know. And I like the bubble idea and the full court if that can be done inexpensively. Good for you for getting it all, squeezing it all into $8,000.
Councilmember Clay?
Is this court going to be lit?
Right now, there are two lights right beside the parking area. There's one in the planting area, and then there's one sort of, they're floodlights that are off the wall of the community center. But depending on budget, we can install additional lights.
Like along, using the community center's power along the side of the community?
It could be because there's a radio light right there.
Sure. I would support the bigger court if we were going to build the basketball court, but I have two questions about it.
Sure.
Where are we going to park the shuttle bus? And is there any concern about putting the basketball court right next to the police entrance? Because I thought one of the reasons why we reconfigured the parking in that area so that it was Public Works and police parking was because we were concerned about people being over there next to the entrance where we bring
Bad guys.
Bad guys through the door.
Sure. Please allow me to bring rec staff Eric Rush because he did attend a meeting that was set up, and I unfortunately couldn't come. And the police department has attended the meeting, and they did specifically talk about the issues that you mentioned.
Before he starts, I also want to say you got some love from Nancy Florin last meeting. It was very nice.
Thank you. She was too generous.
Doesn't like the video or not.
I have seen it.
It's a copy of the book. It's under her pillow.
Anything that makes the county council happier with the voice could.
Okay. Eric Rush, Recreation Department. And Carmen's right. We had a meeting last week with the police department to gain support in this proposition, and the police department was in full support of a basketball court. They, it wouldn't interfere with the entrance, bringing criminals in and out. It may even have another impact of kids playing basketball and seeing someone walk past that's being brought into jail could also be another kind of assurance.
Deterrent?
Yeah, deterrent. And the recreation staff is, really would like to see a little bit bigger court. Carmen, I talked with Todd Bolden, the arborist, city arborist. He said that he had to look at the trees, said it might have to come out anyways because it looks like the roots might be starting to deteriorate. So, that's something that he was in support of as we go forward. And my thought of having a bigger basketball court would be more programming, possible programming. Again, like councilmember Wright said, that sometimes a bigger basketball court encourages running. And as we know right now, we're, you know, obesity epidemic with the children.
Personally aware of that.
It really does encourage some fitness when you can run and have that type of thing. We also, like Carmen mentioned, you know, kids, sometimes growing up, they really like seeing or thinking people are watching them play basketball. And if you drive by and the kids are, you know, dribbling the ball, that's a positive reassurance that, you know what, there's going to be a time when maybe I can play in college and some scout's going to see me. But it's some kind of a thing where kids really like having people see them. Personally, I think it's a good idea, too, to have it close to the community center where we can influence them with some positive programming and opportunities where even though there's a basketball court that's going to be within a softball-throwing distance, if there's too many kids playing at the basketball court here, they can also play on the other basketball court. So, it's kind of a good, a good mix that there is another option. When I was growing up, a lot of times, the bigger guys ran the basketball court, and the little guys had to watch. But if there's two basketball courts pretty close by, that would be a good option for both.
And the parking issue?
And the parking issue, we looked at two possibilities. One was right where they're going to redesign the entrance to the park, and
So, where it's barred off right now on Grant Avenue?
The circle is actually going to move up. It's going to move up. Redesign, probably at least 20 feet, so maybe they're thinking about that.
Yeah, that's correct. Right there in that space. And one of our thoughts in parking the bus there is the fact that the residents are going to be within eyesight of this proposed basketball, outdoor basketball court. So, if you have a bus, it might actually, they won't be able to see the kids playing. And sometimes, there's an association with sound in sight, even though the sound isn't any greater by having some kind of a barrier, a visibility barrier. It seems like it's a little bit smaller or not as great of a sound. And of course, we know it does bounce off.
It doesn't affect the basketball court than a bus.
Yeah, me too. But some people might. And then, there's a second option, which is closer to the library that we looked at, too. And you could actually park the bus right there as well.
Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. As the elected representative for this Maple Avenue corridor, I appreciate the work that you've put into this, and I also appreciate the outreach that's been going on with the residents along Maple Avenue, even though it doesn't necessarily relate to the funding that we're talking about tonight. You know, I certainly support the basketball court. I don't care what age person you talk with in the ward, there is strong support for additional basketball resources here in the neighborhood. I think the dome idea is fantastic because then we're talking about an all-weather court, but that may not be within the means of this current budget. But I have some questions. One is staffing. Does there have to be somebody there whenever the basketball court is in use? You know, or are we going to allow people to use the court when, you know, in the evenings after staff goes home? Which I think is, would be ideal, but I think that's a question that the city manager's going to have to answer. And whether we have, whether we will need any increased staffing for programming during the daytime for activities. The gardens, again, you know, I have residents asking me all the time, not just at the Franklin apartments, but also other apartments, you know, what are their, where is their space for gardens? And they don't want to give up the park that they have where the kids play. And although they haven't specifically said anything about the parking area at the Franklin, the Franklin, a number of people have noted that that is an underused parking lot and it's an awful lot of blacktops. So this is, I think, a very creative and good idea. As far as the lights go, I know anecdotally, people often complain about not enough light at night, but I don't think we should be spending money to install lights or upgrade lights on anecdotal evidence. I think we should have a scientific evaluation of how much light do we have and what type of lighting changes do we need to make before we put in a lot of lights. But I do, if we do have money left, it might be sensible to install one of the newer technology lights to see how they work, to get some real feel for the solar-powered lights. But I would, I would look to see if you couldn't get that evidence from other communities rather than from ourselves. I'm pessimistic when I look at the solar-powered lights that I've put in my yard. They stay lit for a couple hours after dark, but they're not what I would think for community lighting. So in the interest of time, that's all I had to say tonight.
Can I venture to say that it sounds like people are generally in agreement that the basketball court of whatever size seems to work the best? I had been saying, without, you know, moving any curbs or anything, but it also sounds like there's the possibility that the arborist is saying that that tree may be in trouble anyway. And if it is, I think it makes sense to say, well, make it the bigger court.
Yep.
And that the, and that the community gardens have support and that at this point the lighting doesn't have support. That's where we're at.
Just one comment about the end of Grant Avenue. Just want to remind us that as part of that redo, the city, previous budgets has committed a small amount of money to create a visual screen associated with planting, so that would contribute also to helping with the site issue.
Block it with the bus.
Well, I'm saying it, people want to see the bus.
Paint the side of the bus as the.
You could see. The second thing is, I'm hoping that the basketball court will have a grand opening like we did with the pool and as the council will get to go out there and play.
Oh, no.
And one of my New Year's resolutions is to dunk again. I dunked in college, so it'll give me a new incentive to work out so that I cannot dunk when the court gets christened.
The last time I played basketball, some dunker like you broke my hand, so I'm not playing.
Councilmember Robinson?
Well, I think councilmember Schultz had his hand.
Oh, that, that looks like he's leaning on his elbow to me.
Well, no, the finger was pointing a little bit.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm trying to be subtle, but I guess I'm not very good at it. The more basketball, the better. The less asphalt and the more garden space, the better. Anything that goes in those directions, I'm in favor of. And I'm serious about those community gardens. I think wherever there's asphalt parking that's just not being used, regardless of what the zoning ordinance requires, we ought to figure out a way to dig it up and put in gardens, community gardens where people can grow vegetables and sunflowers or whatever they want to grow. That's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Wright?
Very surely, if we do have a grand opening and we on the council go out and play, I think that we should agree now that anyone over six feet should play on their knees.
Probably the rest of you.
It won't take long before that's the way that we.
And if I can just add real quick, in answer to one of councilmember Seaman's questions, I could see this as not having a staff impact. I could see this as pickup games.
It should not. It's obviously a lot of sass.
And I think we should. Do staff have the direction that you need from the council at this point? Anything else you need?
Um.
The best answer is no.
I have a question. Since we do only have sixty-eight thousand dollars and there's a possibility that the court will take up the entire funding if we do expand it to a full-size court and involve more demolition and retaining wall and all that, is our council members comfortable with the idea of doing just a full-size court and not doing community gardens?
Yes, I would say yes.
Yes.
And we would look for future grant opportunities to do the gardens.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like there's agreement on that. My original vote was no to that, but I'm overruled.
That's why I went first.
Okay, your turn.